Thursday, October 24th, 2024. First thing on our agenda is it's our working session on our draft for site plan regulations. Richard? And let's see what we got. I don't know how you want to approach this. Basically, I took the site plan review regulations, here comes the last meeting, addition comes from Stephen and Chair, and did a lot of whittling down regulations. I've not done a review. He got both copies or not. I gave, I sent both of them.
Yeah, I've had both.
I've got 25 to 16 pages.
There were two documents.
Went down to 16.
16, correct.
Yeah, the most current, the final one without the appendices was 16 pages. 17 pages, because I believe in the rules regulations, you should have procedural history documented as a final page. So that's the 17 page. You put on there when you have public carrying, advertisements, adoption, every time you amend it, the whole process, so there's track record. So a lot was cut out. We had comments from DPW, I believe it was, or utilities, about NDW. And I incorporated their comments into it. So John, I'm not sure how you want to go through this. It takes way too long to go through everything I've related.
Richard, what are the thresholds for the environmental and traffic studies?
Those would be on page three, environmental, and four for traffic. And one things. One of the things we took out was the development impact statement, because there's some, that's too much of a burden. One of the things I mentioned, Stephen, is when we took that out, that also meant the threshold for traffic impact study was changed. Because one of the thresholds we agreed on the last meeting was if the traffic volumes of the proposed project would warrant a traffic impact study, then that would be required. Could be required. Well, if you take out the impact study, then you wouldn't have that traffic fine projection. So one of the things I suggest, Stephen, is you could amend your application form to require traffic projections.
Right, and you said you revised that application. The only thing I want to add to that is that any calculation of potential traffic generation is based on the ITE traffic generation manual and not some guides back at the NAPR test.
But you're not, but you're not saying it's required, you're saying it may be required.
But in the application form, you would specify the traffic projections?
Yes.
But not the traffic study, just did the ITE, that's a five, 10 minute calculation?
And if your calculation triggers, then there you go.
There you go. I just have a question about this one. We're using 400 vehicle trips and 50 vehicles per peak hour. Are we, where are we getting those numbers from?
The APN would provide that in.
No, no, sorry. That's our trigger at 400.
400, that would be the estimated trips based on the international traffic.
I'm sorry, I'm saying it wrong now.
Why are those numbers?
Why is it 400?
Oh, 400, not 300, not 500.
Yeah, not, what number are we using? The only reason I'd say that is 400 to me seems extremely high when you think about certain areas of this town.
You're talking about the time. Right.
Right, 50 vehicles per peak hour. At nine o'clock in the afternoon, if you did 45 semi-trailers coming out of some of these places, it'd be 15 times worse than 40 vehicles.
400 vehicles per day is a 24 hour count. 50, unless they peak hour, that's actually a two hour period, it's.
But your peak hours.
Yes.
Seven to nine.
Seven, nine, four to six typically. And to answer your question, that's the reason we have a third threshold in here, projects which the board determines has the likelihood of having significant impact. So somebody does the application, and they submit, and it shows that it's only going to be 300 vehicles, but it's going to be 100 truck trips, and they're going to be mostly during peak hours, then the board will have to go and say, we don't want a traffic impact study. Or if it's 300 just on a particular street, pit at a particular intersection, hey, that's a bad intersection already, the board didn't have the flexibility to acquire a traffic impact study.
Right, and the reason I'm asking that is because of that. I would rather have, I would rather than not have the board to be stepping in multiple times and saying, we know the limit is this, but we've decided you need to do it, then we don't do it for someone else, and now we have some legal issues.
As compared to.
I'm trying to like wrap my head around 400 vehicles a day, because I'm trying to think of anything in this town that generates 400 vehicle trips a day. Maybe.
If you had a.
I don't even think Doug Inman says 400.
If you, if you made that whole plaza does. A shopping center would do more than that. A apartment building of, if you had 40 apartments, that would be ITE numbers, and you did put that at 400.
What about landscaping? I'm talking, what's his name, a meeting house over road.
Unless you're huge, I wouldn't think.
You know what I'm talking about?
50, like 50 an hour, at least if it's arrival and departures.
It's on 140, you know?
Usually, you're not, you're not going to have very many projects that's on reach these numbers unless they're, unless you have a lot of commercial development or a lot of residential, big residential development.
Yeah, I'm not so worried about that, just because of our, you know, it's due to no town sewer. I don't, I don't think we're going to have a lot of, you know, 100 apartment.
That would be too late.
Yeah, very important. But at the same time, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, right.
Does that need to be, the 400 here, I would assume that in certain points, we want to do some of these studies, and then we keep getting rotaries everywhere, we keep changing the state, how they want traffic handled. And I'm just thinking also that semi-trailers to me are a completely different issue. We have multiple places in town that drag a bunch of semi-trailers through this place, and you know, they're twice as big, they're twice as slow. And that, that 400 number, to me, it seems like it's almost, almost no project in this town is going to reach that point. So then it becomes, well, we're going to determine. To me, it's us determining that ends, ends up with why didn't we determine that last time on a different project, we end up in a lawsuit. I don't know if that number, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the number of 400 to see whether this is going to be rare or completely never happening.
Out of any number that gets picked, we really don't, we really don't have an idea at all about what any business is going to generate really. So if you say 300, that might be too low, 200 might be too low, if 400, with your experience and knowledge is, is.
Really? So here's what I'm looking at.
Valuable number.
Lunenburg and Bolton and West Boylston use 600, or they use 400, or they use 200. I just didn't know how we compare to some of the locals, or at least a town this size.
Not meaning to get that specify the threshold number, most of it's simply require traffic impact study.
See, that, that's the other part then. It seems to me, we keep doing this, we tailor our, we're tailoring stuff differently than everybody else's stuff.
If we did it that way, then again, it would be in our hands, right? Because we'd say, you have to do a traffic study, but you can get a waiver from anything in here to explain why you should get a waiver, right? So it would be subjective to us, that we would decide to give people waivers or not, it would be the same thing.
What this does is make it very clear that, hey, if you're doing a big project, you're going to have traffic impact study. The third threshold is basically if you're doing a project that is in a particular location that's going to impact the intersection, or of a type of traffic such as traffic, traffic, we're going to want a traffic study at that time. And one reason this is in your regulations and not in bylaw is so you can look at it next year and say, no, that 400 or the 50, those numbers, nobody's triggering it, in order of constantly having to issue or require traffic studies for projects that are 40 vehicles per peak hour, because this location, you go back a year from now and amend your regulations to change those thresholds.
Okay.
And you don't want to design new site, the site plan regulations with the mindset that just put anything down and you can get a waiver. Otherwise, your, your, your whole site plan review regulations are useless if you.
I just didn't want it the other way, to be that, okay, you don't have to waive it, we don't even have these because we never reached that triggering point. You know, that it becomes.
We don't know, we don't know what would reach the triggering point, really. So that's a good starting point, and. If you had, if you had like 100 day trips, 25 peak hour, just about any retail store you have is going to trigger.
That's why I'm trying to.
Yeah, these thresholds are pretty much standard in other, this is what other communities.
And some of the laws, that's, that's why I was asking, and that's why I mentioned it, you might have been out of the room, where, you know, if you were told that Holden or Stirk or West Boylston or Holden and whoever had similar, at least that would wrap my head around.
Some communities don't have a threshold, but they require a pre-submitting conference and have the planning director of town plan.
Right, right. We've never ever had a threshold.
And I would suggest having thresholds better than having to be one pre, pre-application conference making that determination.
Okay, understood.
Well, that was really my own comment, is making sure that the traffic generation calculations are being drawn up.
Should we list that, traffic generation, that's going to be based on ITE requirements?
Yeah, that has to be.
In the submission requirements?
It'll be in the application.
Probably on the application.
It'll be in the appendancy.
And what I would do, I don't keep, I would just scheme this to one page.
Yes.
So the best thing is, in the regulations, insert a statement on that case, references application, that the traffic data must be by ITE, and put that in the regulations itself. So, yeah, so I'll do that, okay?
But we'll put it there in that traffic section, not in the submission requirements section?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be in the submission requirement section, that on the application form, traffic data must be, or must be using ITE information. All right, so I got, I got some other stuff here, but I've got, I've got quite a bit. So what I think, I'll rather go through every single thing, Richard, I think what I'll do is just address a couple of the big things I got. Then I'm going to take this markup, I'm going to give it to you. Let me take it with you. There's just a couple of things, some of the bigger things in here, other than, you know, capital letters or commas or. So page one.
Page one.
So, page one. So substantial use, where a building is constructed or renovated, substantial use has been achieved when a certificate of occupancy has been issued for the said building consistently conditioned to site plan, blah, blah. That's not, that's not always going to work.
Sometimes there's multiple buildings, so is it your certificate of occupancy on your first building, the second building? So the idea of certificate of occupancy, I don't know, doesn't really, doesn't really work, especially if there's.
Did we tear this down?
If there's multiple buildings.
Yeah, I, I heard it's down a part of it.
Yeah, there used to be a thing about when you get like 50% of the.
Right, this is when we tear it down becomes more vague. So add that back in?
No, it's.
Well, he had a, he had a part in that in the old one. Matter of fact, if you have the old one with you.
Yeah, the old one said for multiple buildings, it was like.
Yeah, it had caught us.
You could use a, a building permit. What it said was, where projects involve building of multiple buildings, building purposes, but project is not approved as a phase development, substantial use has been achieved, CO for 75%. Multiple buildings for non-residential use has not proved as phase development, substantial use has been achieved when CO has been granted to majority of the non-residential buildings comprising at least 75% of the building's total non-residential square footage.
It's, it's a bit complicated. So what I think it should be is what, it should be when, in other words, what we do with it right now is it's listed on the conditions of the site plan. So if we do a site plan, we'll list right on that, conditions that substantial use will be when, for instance, a multifamily, the road's been under construction, project has been opened up, so. Substantial use can also be defined by the planning board within the plans of its individual, on each individual case. You want something like that in there.
Exactly.
That basically says, we're going to consider you.
Struggling with how to word it, but that's.
Right, so it's, it's a third out for the board to say, when you have the road in, or when you build this big building.
We get to this point.
Right, when you get to this point. It's always in the conditions.
Another way to address this then is substantial use, planning board in this decision, affirm the site plan, shall define substantial use where projects shall be.
For each one. We have to do that for each one, as long as we know to do it, we're fine.
And we, like, these are good rules of thumb, but in some cases it works.
There's too many, there's too many variations of a site plan to have a one size fits all one.
No, I totally agree with that. It does make sense to have the board decide at some point during that phase of whatever they're doing.
You worded it perfectly, because I was struggling trying to word it.
So you were saying, like, so substantial use could be achieved before there's any occupancy permit on anything? Like, they're just building the road, substantial uses?
Yes, yeah, because what if you have multiple buildings? Is it your first occupancy or is it your second occupancy?
This would be 75%, what happens if they build.
Your 10th occupancy?
You know, at least first.
It's to be like occupancy.
Not necessarily, no.
So you could just still be constructing, and it would be substantial use?
Some of the stuff we, I mean, look at, for example, some of the pits, some of that stuff wouldn't have occupancy permits because of what it is.
You could always put in the conditions, on this particular site plan, substantial use is when in occupancy, but that's not going to apply for.
Right, that's our.
If you got 10 buildings, or if you got 3 buildings, or if you got 5 buildings, you know, it's just not, it doesn't work, so.
Yeah, especially if it's, I could see multiple apartments, and you know, we're going to say, hey, when the first one's built, that's, you have substantial use because it's A, B, and C. We could say, hey, we're not going to consider that until you're halfway done, or.
You would look at the site plan, you would determine.
On, whatever it happens to be.
Right. So all it is, taking out one and two, and just put in a statement, substantial use is to be defined by the planning board in the site plan.
Perfect.
Yep. So do we typically do that now? Like, is that usually written?
Yes. My case of food poisoning.
Oh, geez.
So interpretation of substantial use. Taking out one, two, and specifying substantial use to be defined by the planning board in the project's site plan review decision.
Okay, so the next one, this, this kind of, this kind of obviates me, because I can't figure it out. Lighting plan depicting location and type of outdoor lighting and lighting fixtures, page two.
Got you. And A, a photometric analysis depicting the illumination impact throughout the site, and particularly on adjoining properties may be required by the planning board. Photometric analysis. Basically, there's a lighting expert takes it and identifies what the candle.
I've had this done in my institution, guy comes in with, basically, understands lighting, light meter says this many candles will hit at this location, so you could say.
Right, and basically, you're looking for zero or a point one at the parking line at the most.
You turn it into a map that shows how far the light is.
Basically, it shows that the light won't intrude on somebody else's.
Yeah.
Yeah, here's the thing, is if we needed one, because somebody wanted some kind of giant display lighting, and you know, this thing ends up blowing up whole neighborhood.
Or somebody has a parking lot of butts residential neighborhood, or a busy street, and you're concerned that's going to be.
Kind of shock their yard, yep.
A good example, long street is, it creates such a blindness, causes.
Can't see the street.
Like, you can't see traffic light and stuff like that. And usually, I've had no problem when we required, when somebody come in doing it, and even adjusting, and they realize, oh, yeah, this is too bright.
Okay, I just never heard one before, I didn't exactly know how it was done. Usually, I think our regs now say all lights must be down facing, but it was never.
Down facing doesn't.
Put it 60 feet in the air.
Yeah, that, that doesn't have a measurement of how impacting it is on the main property. Basically, down facing keeps it from being a, maintaining a dark sky, but instead of a road bright at a level.
And it's a, and it's a maybe required, it's not required.
Correct. Assessment of impacts, page four, seven. I don't know, just kind of a question on this whole number seven. Identification of potential adverse impacts, proposed mitigation measures, proposed uses shall not degrade the existing levels of service surrounding world to intersection below level of service D. Based on peak hour traffic volumes or the existing level of services below loss D, the proponent shall propose mitigation to maintain or improve performance indicators. That to me is just like way too complicated.
Well, that's traffic engineers for an intersection's competitive.
Intersectional competitive, doesn't say that, but.
Yeah, that's the definition that they use.
Yeah, level service D, level service is in A, B, C, D, E, and F. F means you've got a parking lot for a road.
Yep.
A means it's free flow, everybody's happy. We can get, C is the optimal balance, D is when you start getting into the real negative impact.
Angry people driving.
People are starting to back up at the intersections, potentially backing up on a regular basis, where it precludes people can get into.
So we need a right turn lane, or some sort of other.
Decel lane, something like that to mitigate that, or sometimes it's, you pay for the traffic engineer to recalibrate the signal system, because signal is not functioning the way it should for the volume of traffic we have. There's different ways they mitigate it, some are structured, some are simply.
You go from a four-way stop to a rotary, that sort of thing.
A traffic engineer's going to know right away what this is.
Absolutely. I get it. Right, page five, number six. I thought we took this out at the last meeting, showing locations of proposed bicycle facilities. I don't think that's something that we should require. I mean, for instance, you know, you've got a site plan like Onyx, you're not going to make them put a bicycle rack. I thought we took anything that had to do with bicycles out.
Do they mean adjacent to on other properties? Or does that mean just on the project site?
And adjacent to the park site. So it could be bicycle facilities along the right of way, or could be.
Connecting to a trail network.
I think Onyx might want a bike to work.
Yeah, I was going to say, have we had that much of a push about bike traffic?
I haven't seen that.
My kid rides from Hubbardston to wherever we go, 50 miles on a Saturday on his bike.
Yeah. Do you want to take that out?
I thought we did last meeting, we got rid of everything with bicycles, because it didn't, it just didn't apply to, again, it was one of those things that wasn't a one size.
I think it's a toss. I would agree, if you could master plan, people wanted more bike facilities, bike friendly stuff in town.
On a commercial site plan?
People in town pushing.
Was that part of the master plan?
Yes.
Commercial site plan, though?
Well, they're, they're, they're a commercial site plan.
And also, that would be like what we just said, where.
Onyx.
Donuts is, hey, we put in two electrical things and three, especially if it's in the master plan, I kind of get leaving it in there. It's the only way we'll know that it's there.
They can get a waiver or thing.
It doesn't say they need any.
I, I think that if you get a waiver, like you said, if there's a waiver, if it's there, it's.
Here's the thing, this just says it needs a location. If it's not there, it doesn't say they can't have the facility.
No, I know that.
That would be my thing, if somebody comes in with a plan.
There's a trail here and a trail there, why not have it connect through the car?
Well, what you're going to see in, on all the highway upgrades, you're going to see a bike path.
Oh, you see, you see.
But what I'm saying is, say we have a commercial building come in, no way, shape, or form, does it say they mandate anything for bikes? It simply says that they should know that on the plan, which realistically, I have no objection to. And especially if it's part of the town master plan, where they're saying they want to encourage this?
I keep that.
Okay.
Jason's going to get weird. As long as it's not required, if it's proposed.
It's chips, to me.
If it's there, show it on a plan.
If you want to put it in, put it in, if you don't, it's, it's not regulated by us, correct? We have no other bylaw on bike parking.
Westminster used the site plan regulations to formalize portions of the mid-state trail that runs north and south.
Yeah.
You know, if a portion of the trail went through a property under site plan review, and it was just a property handshake, property owner handshake agreement that they could use it, you would have to formalize the trail easement.
Yeah. So I think. The trail stuff they're doing, Onyx, actually, they were involved with one of the committees, correct?
Yes, the open space committee, because they're going to forge a trail, more of a hiking path.
Yeah, interesting, it's like the rail trail sort of thing.
Okay, so page eight, number eight, C. Use of permeable asphalt and similar methods for parking areas and walkways is encouraged and will be a factor for the board, factor the board will consider when waivers are requested. You really can't request a waiver on that, it's in our bylaws, but it has to be, has to be paved.
If it's permeable pavement, we would.
It has to be paved, though.
Permeal means permanent.
No, permeable means water.
Not, not. But the actual parking area has to be paved, right? Am I right? The actual parking. Permeable pavement is paving, paving. It requires more maintenance on the property owner, and it's controversial to cause that. That's the reason it doesn't say it has to be required, because it's encouraged.
Okay. What are we going to, what do we consider permeable asphalt then?
Permeable asphalt has a science standard associated with it, that what it do, does is it allows water to go through. And the, is coarse enough, so it goes through, but one of the mainest issues is you have to actually vacuum the sand.
And see, fines.
Yeah, you can't let the fines bill, collect in there.
Yeah.
Otherwise, if it does, it won't come, it won't be permeable. So it simply allows the water to go through into the ground, so it doesn't run off, it reduces your runoff factor, and it, it can make it easier for developers to meet the stormwater standards.
Yeah, if they have no other way.
If they have no other way.
But we can also include a maintenance plan for it within their conditions.
If, if they have permeable pavement, that should be a, the maintenance plan should be in the stormwater. Because that's essential, because if you don't maintain it, it's not going to work.
Hey, if you go above and beyond to permeable pavement, we might be willing to give you waivers in other areas.
Absolutely.
Because we want to encourage.
It's like.
The bragging bull.
Yeah. If they're going to put it in, and that makes sense for them, they're going to put something in more expensive, maybe than this, it can take.
I haven't seen anything about parking, having, it might be in there, but.
It is, all of the required parking must be paved. I, I know that from one of the.
Yeah, it's in the bylaws.
Yeah, we just did it with one of the smaller buildings, they had to add like one spot.
Right, but you're going to have gravel on the. But you're going to have gravel on the driveway, your parking has to be paved.
The minimum allowed has to be parked, paved.
All right.
Shall be, on nine, utilities shall be placed underground.
That was based on impact comments back in.
Yeah, that was what the lighting department wants to have in there. But again, you can make the case for the way.
Does that?
I know we just discussed that prior, I'm glad.
They've found that it senses provision for weight requests.
Yep, makes sense then. Noise we change from the decibels to just would constitute a nuisance?
Yeah, that kind of bothers me. Have we got to define nuisance or?
My thing is, I think there's a strict difference between what's allowed by law and nuisance. A nuisance to me is some guy playing extremely loud music.
This is.
Sunday at 6:00 AM compared to general, general noise that may be generated by somebody that goes over what's lawful by decibels. I'd rather have the numbers in there because someone can say, well, it's not, it's not a nuisance.
We have numbers before?
Yeah, it's the state numbers. I just think nuisance is a sticky one when it comes to a lawsuit, because someone's going to say, this isn't a nuisance, it's normal.
Well, the nuisance to some people isn't the same to other people.
Exactly.
That's what I'm saying is, is, hey, I might like the music and I'll enjoy it all day, but your next door, you don't like it.
I say we put the numbers in there.
What I had before was the production of any contiguous regular or frequent sound as measured at any point along the parking lines exceeding the levels specified below shall be considered a nuisance. Between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, maximum DVA fifty-five. Between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM, DVA forty-five.
And that's the state standard, which makes sense to me to have it in here. It's, no one's going to argue what a nuisance is, it's defined within the rule.
I think, so one other thing, our bylaw right now says that our site plan is a public meeting, not a public hearing. So how would we change these regs to a public hearing when our bylaw says?
Well, we're also changing our site plan bylaw right now. We can make it public hearing.
Change it? Is what, the one half worries what happens if that part doesn't pass, then we just waste it all.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about that too.
Well, these are regulations. Will we adopt the regulations, we put it back to meeting.
Is there a substantive difference, sorry, new with this?
As a practical matter, no, because for a site plan, you still got, we still notify butters within three hundred feet of the property, which is what any public hearing does. We still give them opportunity to speak and give their opinion. I don't see that.
It has been noticed.
Yeah. And it's notice in the paper, right? So we're doing everything that we would do if it were called a public hearing, but the bylaw just calls it a public meeting. So if you want to change it in the bylaw, you can change it.
The draft bylaw changes hasn't, hasn't proposed as hearing.
To me, to me, if what we're doing is a hearing, we should change it to hearing. And as long as it gets adopted, I guess it's not an issue, correct?
And I was just talking to these after that bylaw goes through, because that bylaw authorizes this be done.
So the changes to the bylaws that are required to adopt these as written are together with some other things, right?
It's one of our zoning amendments.
Is that parsed out individually? So what I'm saying is.
Yeah, it's an article dealing with amending the site plan provision in Arizona.
Okay, there's nothing else unrelated?
I just didn't want some of the controversy. Yeah, you're making complete sense, my colleague.
You're making sense on what?
That that one proposal of changing the word doesn't get involved in some other thing that people are fired up about or don't want, and then we lose it. That if that's, right? That's what you're talking about? Yeah, the adoption of changing hearing and meeting, that it has no controversy attached to that. It's just one more thing.
We're changing our bylaws and then we're adopting these regulations, right? And we're pulling some things out of the bylaws and we're going to put them in these regulations.
Right, but if it doesn't, if it doesn't go, then.
Then we, yeah, I just want to make sure nothing is in that that we're trying to get passed that would be, that is different than what's needed for this.
That makes sense.
And the finished page is already drafted up and adopted is that when people see that one article, they know the regulations you're looking to adopt. So it's not like.
Because once we settle on these, I'm going to close these on line.
One problem some people have, I'm not sure it is disturbing, is that, oh, the planning board's going to have to throw the dot regulations. What are those regulations on the site? You have them drafted up ahead of time, posted, that's what we're going to adopt.
There are our design guidelines for projects, which we don't have right now. So that's a case I've been making in my little tour of committees and commissions. We don't have any design guidelines right now, so it's basically left to the whim of whoever's sitting on the planning board at any given time. And that's not the way to do planning.
That's right. Everybody should follow the same set of rules.
And developers will build what you want to see if they know what they are.
My experience with developers is not one objection to have is unpredicted build.
Just tell us what you want.
Because if they spend fifty thousand dollars in plans and submit them, and then the board says, oh, we want this as well, we want this done instead. And so they're spending, through the review process, another twenty-five thousand devising plans. And by the way, they've got their construction clock running. And. And they're losing contractor because they want to start in two months and they can't start in four months. That's the biggest thing from my experience that developers object to. Most developers say, if you want four, eight-foot sidewalks, fine, just tell.
Carl, what else you got?
That's it, the big stuff. I'm going to give these to, because I marked up different things like letters and stuff like that, so you could just, rather than email it to you, I'll just give it to you and you can just take it with you and.
Go over them for now.
I just wanted to talk again about the town center design guidelines, like how, I feel like we should have these mentioned.
Well, those are just guidelines, they were never adopted.
They're nothing.
I mean, we spent a lot of effort putting them together for guidelines that were never.
I don't mind having them referred to in here. If you're going to build, if your site project is located in town center, please see our guidelines.
Like, could that be an extra appendix?
Then I make this suggestion to you, and you tell me that. One thing to have is an appendix of relevant documents. List your master plan, town center development guidelines. Any of those type of studies you've got that maybe they should look at, they're not part of regulations, but.
Yeah, that would be good, like references, reference documents.
We have those online.
Like right in the document, reference document.
Having it there does make sense only because for most people, they start searching and they get lost in the weeds. Or they may miss, hey, I forgot about this one document because I didn't realize I was in the development zone, or I was here, I was there.
I'm fine with someplace in here saying if your project is located in town center, please see the guidelines online that's in the planning board.
So you want me to add that in there somewhere?
Somewhere.
Okay.
I like your suggestion of relevant.
Yeah, like you could link to that IT traffic.
My thing is, if they're online, it's an appendix that's clickable, which is great. Because it's, it's literally appendix. And then you just click and it brings you rather than trying to find it separately.
I can't. It frustrates me so much that nothing is cross-linked, right?
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying is, is if it's not in here, there needs to be a way to get to it quickly rather than, at least for me, because.
I think a separate appendix, I think, is good. Like you suggested, relevant, relevant documents or something, something to that effect that somebody can see, but it's not really enforceable because they were never adopted in any kind of bylaw or anything like that, that guidelines.
We have almost three pages of landscape materials compared to the town center, which to me is probably a thousand times more important than.
It can go in, you know.
Right, yeah, that's why I'm saying it probably belongs in here based on some of the other stuff we have. It does make sense.
What else you got?
That was it. I assume we took out the lit sign thing, we just replaced it with, I assume we're going to be updating the sign bylaw. Yeah, okay.
I would encourage you to have, you want to make signs regulate somewhere.
What's that?
I would encourage you to have them, then make signs regulate somewhere.
Yeah, we have a sign bylaw.
You have a sign bylaw, it needs some updating, we're going to get to it.
Yeah, so that was one of the questions. The other part is, I have a hard time going through this without having to refer to what's going. Is there any way that you could just scan that and shoot me those pages or?
The one marked up?
I'm going to look again, my apologies. Got to stop looking at things on my phone apparently.
Oh yeah, I want to look at this on my phone.
There's one called second draft annotated.
Okay.
So I think it's, I think it's reading much better. It's more direct and to the point, and I think it's a bigger.
So I'll make these changes send to you.
Do you feel the need to bring Richard back for another powwow or?
Well, how about we see the final draft and then we make the decision then you want to do that?
We can do that, yeah.
And we're going to talk about, in the contract I have, it talks about doing a public presentation.
Right.
And questions, I assume that was intended at the point that you're looking for adoption?
Yes.
And that's not going to occur in time.
That'll probably be in May of next year.
So even the site line, you want to see if our contract has a determination date.
Okay, we'll check.
Yeah, check that.
If we need to amend that, we can.
Still the same budgetary here at least.
Yeah.
Well, if we get it in before June.
Yeah, for us it is. I don't know how you read your books.
The only potential problem I may have is, I'm probably having a left knee placed in April.
Oh no, you got to wait.
That's because.
What's it, will you in a wheelchair, Tom?
In May of twenty twenty-five, I'm supposed to go to Scotland to do the West Side in Hawaii.
Can't blend it in.
Okay. So we're planning next spring sometime.
Okay, so we'll get a view of the final draft. If we think we need the powwow again, we'll notify you right away.
Yeah, I think we're ninety-five percent there.
Yeah, I agree with you. Came a long way.
And what I would do on the list of relevant documents, I'll listen and then I'll see if I can create a hyperlink to the town's website. The biggest issue. Don't you sign it?
I don't have to sign it.
Bring your rubber stamp. The biggest issue with hyperlinks is if your website ever changes.
No, I'm just saying that even if on the paper, it was in the back or on the line, it was in back, if it's not back, it needs to be made.
Thanks, Richard.
Ryan, do I have that right?
Greg, what do you have?
Delson Roy, Greg Roy, Delson Roy.
Greg? Okay, well, you just answered my question. You got to put up a tripod.
Sure.
You're going to plug it right over here.
Okay.
All right, we're all set. All right, so next up on the agenda, public hearing, shared driveway, special permit for forty-five Johnson Road, RJD Realty Trust applicant. So that being said, I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
To move.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. All right, let me read the legal notice. Pursuant to section three oh one dash three point four point two, access of the town of Sterling protective bylaws, notices hereby given that the planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, at six forty-five PM in room two oh five, Butterick Municipal Building, one Prague Street. To review the special permit application for shared driveway coming off forty-five Johnson Road, tax map one eighteen, lot nine, RJD Realty Trust applicant. Copy of the plan can be reviewed at the planning department office during regular town hall office hours. Stand by planning board. So we have, from Delson Roy, we have Greg, sorry Greg, your last name again?
Greg Roy.
Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With your permission, I'll give you a brief introduction and then.
Please do.
Love to hear comments and feedback from you. So thank you again. My name's Greg Roy with Delson Roy. I'm representing the applicant, RJD. The two members of RJD are here, it's the Bagani brothers, Rob Bagani and Dave Bagani. And you may, the board may recall, a month ago, we came before you with an A and R plan for the same property, which again is located at forty-five Johnson. And the property is a very large tract of land. Rob and Dave have purchased the property with the intention of subdividing the frontage lots. One lot was created to contain the existing house at forty-five, and the, and the outbuildings on forty-five, at forty-five Johnson. And then they created two additional larger acre lots for the purposes of, for their own purposes actually. So this is actually a land deal where the two of them are intending to own and construct their own houses, one on each lot, and raise the families on those lots. And then there's a, the remaining land, which is a large portion of land, is in a watershed protection district, which will remain as watershed protected land.
That's the land that's staying in chapter four there?
Yeah, actually, even, even I think the land, Greg, if I'm saying anything wrong, I think they're only pulling out a portion that's surrounding forty-five, the actual existing buildings. And that was done last night at the select board meeting, or at least they, the select board agreed, I think, to release their right of first refusal on that property.
That was for the actual farmhouse that's for the.
The rest of the land is going to stay in sixty-one A, because that's the intention.
That's about eighty-eight.
So yeah, it's a lot.
It's actually roughly, there's roughly a hundred and sixty in the watershed protection. There's twenty-two buildable, which is current in sixty-one as well. But there's a hundred and sixty that are in the watershed protection.
Lot of land. So at the end of the day, we're proposing the existing house and two additional houses on that large tract of land. The, the way that the topography exists on the property, it seems to lend itself well to the access of the two houses, which would be on the top. of the two houses, which would be on the top of the, of the hill as shown on the plan here, through a common driveway or a shared driveway, which is the subject of this application this evening. So we, we prepared the plan, which is shown before you here, which includes one common driveway access from Johnson Street, looping up to the hill, to the top of the hill, where we would access the two lots. One is on the lower portion of the plan, and one is on the upper portion of the plan. We designed that driveway in accordance with the driveway regulations, which generally speaking, requires a 12-foot layering surface, a 20-foot clear zone, and a maximum slope of 15%. We also included a swale on the, along one portion of the driveway. The driveway would be, would be super elevated, if you will, towards that swale, which is on the uphill side of the property. And we're, although we didn't see any requirements for stormwater management, we did include a stormwater basin at the foot of the hill, right at the intersection of the proposed driveway and Johnson Street, just to make sure that we take the curse off any, any runoff that's coming down that swale along the edge of the driveway before it gets discharged to the wetlands, which is just on the northerly side of the, just on the north side of the page to the west of Johnson Street. We, we do acknowledge that we had some comments from, I think, the fire department, the D and W director, as well as some peer review comments. We would like to talk through some of those with you this evening, but we didn't want to put a cart before the horse, if it will, so we, we thought that we would just give you an initial presentation and then we, then we happen to speak with you. The applicants have met with the, I think it was lieutenant at the fire department to talk through some of their comments. And we think that we've, it's our opinion that we designed the driveway in accordance with the regulations relative to, to the decision.
Which, which don't exactly, which don't exactly pertain to common driveway, but it was a starting point.
Well, there's no regs for common driveways, to be fair, so.
Right, it becomes discretionary for the board.
Well, that's, that's difficult for applicants, but, yeah. But anyway, I wanted to leave it at that and see any questions or comments that you folks have.
If you, do you have a copy of Graves?
We do, yep. I'm happy to go through that.
Yeah, please.
If you'd like to go through it.
Yeah, let's, let's go through each one and then we can, we can talk about it.
Okay, do you want me to just read it or?
Please.
Yeah. So I will read this and we can go through. I'm going to skip just down to the, the substance of the, of the comment. So Graves letter is dated September 18th, and it has 10 comments. So comment number one, the protective bylaw has a provision for residential lots to be accessed by a shared driveway by special permit if adequate vehicular access is provided. However, the protective bylaw does not have design requirements specific to shared driveways. The Town of Sterling does have driveway design requirements. Town of Sterling driveway requirements available on the fire department's website that appear to be focused on driveways that would serve one lot developed for a single-family dwelling. Whereas a shared driveway serves multiple households, a shared driveway needs to provide adequate space for two vehicles to pass in addition to other criteria. Neither of the two approaching vehicles on a shared driveway should be expected to back up or avoid the, to avoid the other vehicle. Furthermore, as with any driveway, there needs to be adequate access for emergency response apparatus. Therefore, GEI offers the following comments and where possible pertinent regulations are cited. Comment number two. The plans propose a shared driveway approximately 625 feet long with an elevation change of approximately 75 feet and three horizontal curves. The driveway is proposed to be 12 feet wide with seven, seven-foot shoulder finished with, finished with low man seat. Vehicles approaching from. Vehicles approaching from opposite directions will have to utilize the shoulders to pass, which will be problematic when the shoulder is covered with snow or during wet soil conditions. Based upon GEI's review of the regulations in communities contiguous to Sterling and experience, experiences in other non-contiguous communities, the paved portion of the shared driveway should be wide enough to pass, enough to pass two vehicles. An 18-foot wide paved shared driveway is commonly required in other communities. Three. A vehicle turnaround sufficient for firefighting apparatus needs to, needs to be provided where the shared driveway ends and becomes two driveways, serving the individual single-family dwelling. The grades on the turnaround must not exceed 4% in any direction. The first and second horizontal curves from Johnson Road near the project, excuse me, near the project entrance have centerline radius of approximately 75 feet and 50 feet respectively, and a grade of approximately 14.5%. Whereas the shared driveway should accommodate passing vehicles, GEI recommends that the grade on the, on these and similar horizontal curves not exceed 8%. Although the shared driveway's vertical alignment appears to meet the Town of Sterling driveway requirements, maximum grade at 15% on straight sections. These requirements appear to be focused on driveways that would serve one lot developed for single-family dwelling. Based on GEI's review of the regulations in communities contiguous to Sterling and experiences in other non-contiguous communities, maximum shared or common driveway grade requirements typically vary between 8% and 12%. GEI recommends that the shared driveway be designed in accordance with the maximum driveway grade established by the planning board unless a lesser maximum grade is recommended by the Sterling Fire Department. GEI recommends that the grade on the straight sections of a shared driveway not exceed 12%, and the engineers strive to not exceed 10%. Six, GEI is concerned about the hydraulic capacity of the culvert that crosses Johnson Road. GEI recommends that the design engineer evaluate the change in peak stormwater flow rates to the culvert that will result from constructing the shared driveway. GEI also recommends that consideration be given to decentralizing the stormwater management system, e.g. providing a level spreader into rain gardens along the driveway to divert concentrated stormwater in the swale to a wooded area or areas to promote natural peak rate attenuation, reduction, and infiltration. Seven. The plans propose a shared, the plans propose shared driveway radii of 10 feet at the intersection of Johnson Road. Considering the narrowness of Johnson Road, hit with approximately 14 feet, greater radii perhaps up to 20 feet should be provided. In GEI's opinion, the portions of the radii that exceed 10 feet could, could be constructed of durable weather resistant material, other than pavement provided. These areas are not, provided, these areas are not obstructed by mailboxes, plantings, or other obstacles to turning vehicle blueprints. Eight, the plan view on sheet one needs to include driveway stationing so that the profile view on sheet two can be viewed in relation to the driveway's horizontal layout. Nine, there's an existing culvert in Johnson Road that bays water from the area near wetland flag A8. A8 was not labeled on the plans, to the east side of Johnson Road. The culvert and its diameter of material should be shown on the plans. GEI has no issues with driver sightlines for the vehicles exiting, exiting the proposed shared driveway. And that is the substance that they are, peer review like. We would like to talk through those.
Don't like to start.
Yeah. We can't. I didn't want to be presumptuous, Mr. Chair, but we're happy to.
So right off the bat, there's an issue with the 12% grade. The, the, we don't have any kind of a turnaround for a fire truck or anything like that. That's in all our common driveways, so you're going to have to find a spot for that.
Yep.
There is a concern. There is a concern on the driveway because of the length of this, the steepness of this, that the width of 12 feet is going to be inadequate in case another car is coming down the driveway and somebody's going up, somebody's going to have to backtrack all the way up this driveway. It really should be wide enough for, for two cars to get by in this particular situation here. Let me ask you, what's the conditions up there? Is that ledge or is it?
It's actually not. We did soil testing and it's, we didn't encounter any ledge. Pretty good, pretty good depth of material.
Because you've got a, you've got a, a good 20-foot, a good 20-foot slope here coming down onto the driveway, but you're calling for low man seating. Is it, is it dirt or is it ledge?
What slope?
Right here? Are you cutting in?
There's currently just any vegetation, trees, shrubs. There is rock. We didn't do any soil testing here. The intent is to cut what we, what we need to and need the existing vegetation just to, because it's already established.
So you don't really know if there's ledge in this area?
We do not know.
Well, we tested up for the subject system tweak. I think we got depth of about 10 feet.
Up top on the flat, up top on the flat, right?
Well, on top of that same slope, just further up slope. And yeah, you're chasing grade there to catch up, but it's really only about an eight-foot cut at the maximum point there. And it's a one on, the cut slopes, we, we designed it one on two for the purposes so that we, so that it can be stabilized as, you know, conventionally with low man seat there. I think we also specified some padding on some of those steep slopes too, just to make sure that we, you know, that we could accommodate that. So we, we do have some, some proposed suggestions to overcome some of the concerns raised by the peer review consultant and also the fire chief. I, I guess the, the issue with the turning of vehicles and the pavement width. I, I don't know of a town that does 18 feet. You know, there might be one, I'm sure there is, but, you know, we're talking about two houses here. You know, if, we, we do feel that we need to, we need to accomplish, we need to make some accommodations for some turnings. So what we would propose to do is put, you know, a turnout area, which is pretty common on, on common driveway regulations in surrounding towns, wherever you saw hundreds, a few hundred feet, 200 or 300 feet, you put a turnout, a wider area where you maintain that so that folks can pull in if you have a car coming. You're talking about two residential houses here, so it's not like we're talking about a, a street or something where you have a real high volume of traffic. It's still only a two, driveway serving two houses. We do understand the fire, the fire truck turnaround. We, this is probably hard for you to see, but we put together this exhibit today.
One outside.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. We do feel like we can put a fire truck turnaround right, right there as we, as we split to the two common driveways. That's a very valid concern. And then we have a turn.
Yeah, thank you. So if you're not able to get 18 feet, how many feet can you get?
Well, I, we just, we don't want to do anything more than what would be required. And your requirements seem to suggest, you have driveway regulations that seem to suggest 12 feet. So we're, we're proposing 12 feet. We are, we're doing a 20-foot, like the, like the detail in the, in the fire department regulations, showing 12-foot wearing surface and four-foot shoulders. We do have a type one plan. We are, we do, we have four-foot shoulders on both sides.
16.
So we are proposing a 20-foot.
16.
Section, if you will, yep. But we are proposing the 12-foot wearing surface.
Greg, I think 16 would work.
For a minimum.
At a minimum.
Well, my, I guess I have a question, just because, like they say, that Johnson Road's only 14 feet wide, which is an existing roadway. And we're just a shared driveway to two houses. So I know that the standard, like we said, is 12 feet. I know wider can be better sometimes, but the existing roadway to access the, the driveway is, you know, narrower than the driveway. I guess I just have some confusion there.
I don't know that it, I don't know that it's 14 feet.
If I may.
Go ahead.
That road predates all other regulations in town when cars, let alone horses, were being used. So you're not talking about the same standards. Nobody back then was concerned about water infiltration onto another person's property, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What, what we're trying to do with here on this plan is a shared driveway that needs a special permit. It's not a standard driveway in this town. And what we're trying to do is use this, the special permit for adequate vehicular access is provided. And at least I think myself as a member of the board and the others seem to be trying to find what, what can we define as adequate, show us what is adequate. And even according to the engineer that we use, this won't work with two vehicles coming side by side. And if this driveway was very short, very straight, you know, it was a 30-foot section, where two cars only had to move 15 feet, I would understand this, but this driveway is a complex driveway, especially down near that curve, where if somebody had to back up, they'd have to go backwards around two different curves on a slope. So, so I understand what the engineer has concern. I also understand your plan, we'd have pullover areas so that you do not need to disturb even more of this, probably create an even steeper. I think that proposal may be explored by you guys or at least explained to the board as to how those work. I've dealt with those on another project in my private life, so I get the idea. However, just understand, we're trying to make this thing, as it mentions, it's a special permit, adequate. And I understand you both brothers, you're going to live there. What I'm looking at is, you sell your house six months from now after it's built, someone moves in, you now have problems with both neighbors, you don't get along, whatever. We don't want this to become a point of contention. That's always been my philosophy.
There will be a homeowner association agreement, I assume, that will spell out maintenance responsibilities.
Yeah, maintenance agreement.
Yeah. Yeah, we.
There's our easement.
Yeah, we created the easement, as actually was shown on the A&R plan, though, in anticipation of that, yep.
So Greg, if you got 20 feet clear, you should be able to achieve 16 feet, don't you think?
Well, it's, it's not a matter of being able to, it's just wanting to make sure that we're not held to a standard that isn't, that's arbitrary, I guess, is what we're, you know, frankly, we're not trying.
I think what we're trying to do is avoid any kind of a problem because this isn't your typical driveway straight into a house 50 feet or 100 feet or 80 feet. This is, you got nearly 100-foot climb here from bottom to top with this curve, and it's uphill all the way. So it is, it's a legitimate concern that you or whomever down the road that may be owners of these properties coming down around this curve meets up with the UPS guy or meets up with the FedEx guy or the neighbor or whatever and starts backing up on a slope, that could be pretty risky in the wet the time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, what total length of this driveway, do you have that number?
625.
625.
Yeah, 625 to the split.
So for the other person there, 800 plus probably, it's a large driveway. That's one of the things, it's very uncommon for a, a single driveway to be this long in town, let alone with that many elevation change. And I, I think that's where the concern comes from the board. As Spish has mentioned, modern day Amazon truck, they're pulling up there and if you expect an Amazon truck to back down that.
No.
They're going to end up off a cliff.
I understand.
You know, that's kind of what we're trying to avoid here. Again, I may not be locked in a certain width. If there is another way that you could explain, or another way of explaining to the board how this would be safe or, or adequate, you know, that to me is the word. What's adequate?
Can I make a suggestion to the board? I could set up a meeting between fire, Graves Engineering, and you folks, and we can see what we can sort out and come back with a, a plan that, that you could approve.
They could make sense if we all get in and talk about.
Well, yeah, because if it's, if it's really, that's the metrics that we, and I understand what you're saying. I want to make sure, I, I, I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I'm just, you know, just trying to sort of paint the picture. And we didn't formally respond to these comments because we wanted to have this conversation with everybody.
We're not picking a number of width that's arbitrary. We're trying to pick a number that works. So it's, it's really not, we're just pulling it out of thin air. We're trying to pick a number that actually works.
Is it, is it safe to assume, I guess I'll pose this as a question. If we have such a meeting that Steve suggested with the fire department and we come up with an agreement, is it, if we come up with a plan that is acceptable to the fire department and to the peer reviewer, are you folks likely to, to find that acceptable or do we need to? I mean, we'll obviously relay the, what, you know, your suggestions this evening as well.
To me, though, if, if we're taking a peer review and they say that they believe this is adequate, I, I would have a difficult time, and, and we've had this discussion before. I'm not a proponent of shared driveways. However, I've looked at this property. I think it's the only way. There is no alternative other than a shared driveway in this property.
Well.
I cannot, well.
That's a lot of work.
Without a tremendous amount of work that doesn't make anything financially feasible. Therefore, if I have a Graves Engineering telling me after a meeting, at least from my own vote, that this is adequate, that carries a huge amount of weight. But I, I think the chair needs to probably speak to that or maybe some of the other members.
I'm not opposed to having a common driveway here to access these lots. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. But it would have to be, it would have to be a safe driveway. It would have to be, you know, peer review would have to look at this. You know, peer review would have to look at this, be satisfied with the grades, the width, to make sure that the concerns that we have are met. Is anybody... Why don't we take a quick read of the fire department's comments? Because these will come into play too. So, the fire department requirements... So, the fire department's comments were, "My concern is that they are not going to be able to meet various grade requirements." We're talking about that. The cut slope requirements and that there may be a need for a guard rail due to steepness of the fill slopes. And I would agree with that. "There is not enough specific information on the submitted plan for me to officially evaluate, but I would like graves to apply our requirements in their evaluation of the project." DPW says, "I share similar concerns as the fire department. The driveway is extremely steep. But, I am more concerned with the water flows coming down off the property. I'm also interested in the proposed stormwater basin is going to discharge to and how that will affect downstream properties." I can tell you that our subdivision ranks, our roadways never exceed 10%. I think if you could work in that 10% area.
Mr. Chairman, just so I... Steve and... I would have the fire department as well as the DPW's measure on here, as well as graves.
Sounds like...
We'd have it on all boards.
Sounds like... Because, you know, the guy in DPW is a B E, so...
It sounds like a good way to go. We can get everybody in the same room and come up with a plan.
I think that's the best way to do it. Otherwise, we're going back and forth and back and forth. He'll be here forever.
Yeah, I agree. For your sake.
Let me pitch some dates to all the parties and see what we can get for either next week or the week after.
Yeah. We appreciate that. We can be available almost anytime. So, just let us know as soon as we can. Did you have anything else you folks?
I do, but if we're gonna have a meeting with all of them involved, I think that's...
Do you have any comments or concerns from the public? Okay, so, all that being said, then we should probably continue this to our next meeting.
Our next meeting would be November 1st.
I guess I do have a couple of comments. I would invite you to look at the set culvert that was referenced by the DPW.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I said I would invite you to take a look at the culvert that was referenced by the DPW. I think the only thing... The only water that collects is what falls from the sky. There's no swell that leads to it. It's actually on a slope. It's buried between underneath brush, rocks and stone.
Is water going to be coming from that basin to that culvert though?
No, there will not.
No?
Again, I think the only thing that... The only water that gets in that is what falls in the sky.
Chair, the only concern I'd have, I think, with mention here is that that stormwater basin is right next to somebody else's property, an existing wetland. And I think that CONCON may have to look at that as to how that would affect, as mentioned, how it would affect the downstream properties and the roadway. It may not affect the roadway, however...
Have you filed with CONCON? Have you filed with CONCON? CONCON is on the fourth.
Excuse me?
CONCON's on the fourth. The fourth, okay.
And that wetland is... So, where that wetland meets the basin is roughly, I mean, off the top of my head, 240 feet from the property line? Which would be like... The well is still on our property, I don't know for sure.
Yeah, it's still on.
That line is not someone else's property?
No, the property line is over here.
Okay, my apologies. I thought this was still an A and R. Roughly 250 feet.
Put the viewpoint on the plane again.
Good, thank you.
But no, I think we can... Hopefully, we... The idea would be... I think it's a good idea we can get everybody in the room. I think that's the way we can talk about all these types of issues and hopefully we can...
Let's set it up. You can continue the hearing to...
Okay. So, I'll take a motion that we continue the hearing on the shared driveway for Johnson Road to our next meeting, November...
45 Johnson Road?
45 Johnson Road, November 22nd.
November 1st.
21st. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote's done. Continue until 21st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion to close the...
Nope.
Drive will continue. Don't close it.
We met at the A and R briefly. How you doing? In relation to Kirsten?
Yes, she's in the way. Sorry, yes. Nice to meet you.
Good to see you.
Every gay many yards, you know. So, you can get both.
You'd have a hard time doing that. You'd have a hard time doing that because of the slope on the side.
Yeah, but I'm saying it's easier to do in some cases than full width.
It would be in this situation. I mean, it needs to be... It needs to be wide.
That's a tough calculus.
We'll have Ryan from DPW there, fire, graves engineering there, engineer. They'll sort it out.
One of us should be there.
We can spend too much with email change with all of these folks.
Obviously, it's better off because if they all agree, it's pretty...
I assume we should put shared driveway regulations on our office to...
Those will be part of the residential. That'll be in... So, third year, we were doing the... What was the thing we were doing that was mentioned? No, the bicycles. Wasn't that mentioned in third year or whatever? Were with you?
Everything else.
I like that. Everything else.
Economic development this year, residential act.
Next thing on our agenda is planning board review, comment on the unexpressed removal permit, no request to the select board. I don't think we've ever weighed in on these.
No, you haven't. But, I figured you, being so familiar with the site plan, if you wanted... If you had something to say, now would be your chance. I gave the select board, one comment was they don't have any provision to have an agent for the town conduct routine inspections of the operation. It's just fine going out there when they do the blasting. So, I suggested that they have either graves or ecotec do periodic inspections of the site to make sure that they're following all the conditions. That was the only...
MISH, PRR, whatever, MS.
MSHA?
MSHA. They're out there on a regular basis, I think.
They normally wouldn't be out unless there's an issue or upon their inspections, which are probably quite a ways apart. And it would only deal... It's like OSHA. They're only gonna deal with certain things, certainly not our build plans. They don't think they're doing their standards.
They're not gonna be looking to make sure that the conditions on our permit...
Right. They're gonna look more like this railing is out of place, whereas we're more concerned that the building was where it was supposed to be and that our certain maintenance plans were...
What kind of inspection do you have in mind?
There's... The select board always attaches a list of conditions that go with the permit. Do this, don't do that. Basically, we'd have an agent for the town going out there making sure that they're following the conditions. That's it.
Did we put conditions on the wash house? They wouldn't be trucking material in to wash at the wash house or...
I don't recall often.
I know there was a question about...
They're allowed to import. They want to import.
There was a question about that at one point. It wasn't, they said it was not...
They were gonna pull everything off site.
Then, you know, it's not restricted. They said it would not be used as an external. But, that was a statement, not a... Not a condition.
Not a condition.
Because they said they would not. Because that was brought up by someone else saying, when they run out, can they just run the wash plant as a prop-making business? One, we said that's 20-something years in the future, but it was also their own statement. But, it wasn't a condition.
I don't believe it was.
Yeah, I remember that conversation only because it was part of whether that would be their own traffic or additional traffic from off-site trucks.
Comments to share with the select board?
I like the idea of the conditions and some of their statements because they have a bunch of maintenance plans for like the settling pools that they have to be done at certain times and they can't be over a certain fill. Who's checking that besides them? If it's only part of our agreement?
Well, they have their reports that they have to file every year when they're monitoring wells.
A year later, the horse might be out of Lebron by then.
Well, the other part too is at least, I would assume that whoever's doing this is gonna look over all the prior... Say it's yearly. They're gonna look over all the prior year's reports, see if anything was noticed. And they go, if this condition isn't in any report, because it doesn't need to be, I need to check it.
It's not gonna be me.
Although, the only issue I'd have with it is cost. Is, I mean, what are we looking at for an inspection? I just don't know what that entails.
Yeah. According to graves, they estimated that it's gonna be anywhere from 600 to 800 depending on the time they spend out there.
And how often?
And then how often?
How well, that'd be up to the select board. Certainly when they're in operation. Certainly not when they're shut down for the winter.
I agree with your sentiment. And also, my only part to that would be if we're going to, at least as far as I'm concerned, if we're gonna require that, they should be paying for it.
Yeah, well, they've got about $5,400 in their 53G account.
Just to draw from that. And that'll last what, a few years?
They've been good about something like...
They're gonna stop their operation. I wonder what you read?
What's that?
If they start washing stuff, they're gonna do it all year.
You're talking about rock here.
Yeah, they'll keep going.
Not just, you know, so...
Yeah, and it's not a paving plant where they're gonna shut it down come, you know, December, January. I don't have a problem. I don't either.
It's a good idea.
Yep.
And as far as the building itself, that's been...
Yeah.
Occupancy-graded and...
That's been built. The settling basin has been built. It's been inspected by graves several times now.
It's big. Basin's a big.
Yeah. Before they build it.
It looks good.
So, I'm hearing that you'd like to reiterate the support for this condition of periodic inspections.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Determined by the board. Just like how often?
Nothing wrong with that.
Et cetera. Certainly can't hurt.
That way there kind of keeps tabs on the whole thing.
Hopefully, you don't think it's going to be wrong.
Graves wave the red flag.
Anything else on this, Dan?
All right, you're good.
We set November date already?
Yep.
Meeting minutes?
Any errors on the office document?
I didn't see any. Is ready? Make a motion to accept the minutes.
August 23rd?
No, August 26th.
Oh, I'm sorry. August 26th. Yeah, August 26th is the first one.
Yep.
So, just to clarify, I have a motion to accept the minutes for August 22nd, 2024. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we can move on to September 12th.
Anybody find any...
There is a motion.
There is.
What type seems out as great?
It's been a good job.
That's why I get spanked at big box.
I'll type as poorly as I do.
Everybody's all set. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from September 12th, 2024.
Motion accepted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just a few things before we adjourn. So, you know, I've been making the tour of all the boards, commissions and committees.
How's that going?
Yeah, that's been a barrel of fun.
That's a piece of rhetoric.
I bet it has.
My last appointment will be with the conservation commission on Monday, November 4th. And then we have our public forum on the zoning changes on Thursday, November 7th, across the way at the 8:35 Town Hall. And then I thought we would spend either some time at our November meeting or our December meeting, debriefing from all of the meetings I've had and the input I've received and decide how we want to proceed. Some of our proposals have received a good deal of support. Others, not so much. So, we'll want to talk about that. That's all I have for you.
Okay, so you gotta figure a day to do that? Talk about that?
I thought we could do it at our November 21st meeting if county permits. Certainly at our December meeting if we have...
Do you want us to come to the public hearing?
Yes, I do.
To deflect from the blow.
Somebody's got a block for me.
What date is that?
Thursday, November 7th, 6:30.
18:35 upstairs.
We will be cooking some punch. Courtesy of MS.
I think they did for our forum too, didn't they?
November 7th, 6:30?
November 7th.
A good forum.
6:30.
6:30.
6:30.
Takes all the fun out of cooking.
Assume the concerned citizens that have sent their feedback, you invite them to the...
I'm sure it's all positive. No, it was a little sarcasm and I'm sorry.
The concerned citizen feedback, yes, you'll get it all.
Public. Particular gentleman, I'm sure.